All right, I have nine o'clock. Rory has the tape rolling. I will call this meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here.
Delka?
Here.
We will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion for the agenda to be received as proposed or as amended?
Second.
And moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Item number two, Budget Work Session. Mr. Perry.
All right, good morning. Looks like we have three, or excuse me, four different departments today. What I do want to do is I want to switch up the order. So I would like Brian to go with the Attorney's Office first, Conservation following that, followed by the Engineer, and then last but not least, IT. So I will start sharing my screen and get that up on the board here quick. All right, please let me know on Zoom if you can't see this. Otherwise, I will assume you can, and I will... I'll let Brian take it away, and I'll fill in when I need to.
Good morning, good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
Good year.
Well, we started this as we hit March. In terms of fine collection, a little unsure on where that was going to go. As we progressed through the year, we hit our threshold the same month as we always do, which is typically September. We met the threshold amount there. So that seems to be consistent. The... There was a bit of a lull early on. We pulled back collection efforts during the parts of COVID. But we're back on track in terms of the intervals that we typically see. That has not changed, and we don't anticipate that it will necessarily. So that amount will remain the same. I budgeted, in terms of revenue, to be the same. And I think I should point out for the Board, in 2019, we had anticipated a bit of a struggle with fine collection, just in that the courts had interpreted of how they're going to assess certain things, including fines, surcharge. It didn't affect us, it affected the Sheriff's Office considerably. But that law did change back in July and gave us a little more latitude. But we didn't see much of a pullback from that. In addition to that, I had budget, I had anticipated budgeting for this year out of fine collection, new office furniture. I decided not to do it this fiscal year. Plan on doing it this upcoming fiscal year. It's certainly time for our office, I think it's 20 years old or so, at least. So that's the only thing out of the ordinary. The $3,000 change that you see, if you're looking at James's... Because I have, I currently have three vacancies. I have an office specialist vacancy that we were doing our second round interviews, and that was in November, and things got bad. So we pulled back on that, on the second interview. I had a retirement as our domestic violence investigator that needs to be filled. And I've had a vacancy unfilled from its inception, which was my discovery compliance officer. I don't know if, Mr. Chair, you remember, but we were working with Waterloo Sheriff's Office for years about how to transport videos back and forth without doing it like the Stone Age and burning discs. We finally found someone to accommodate that. So that $3,000 is something that we are splitting, sharing. I'm paying three, Sheriff's Office is paying four, Waterloo Police Department's paying four, and Cedar Falls Police Department's paying four. And that's an annual fee that we'll have. So that vacancy will not be filled until we're up and running with that, which I anticipate will be sooner rather than later. Then there's some additional, the training change is actually just a carryover. We typically have trainings in the spring and the fall. This past spring, it was held virtual, so we still were able to accommodate the attorneys and their CLE training. When the fall came back around, they did that in person, and that was also simultaneous to courts opening back up. So I made a difficult decision not to send anybody. I'm actually thankful that I did. So we have that group of folks who are not able to attend the fall session, so I anticipate we'll have to double up next November with our training. So we weren't, we didn't have to spend any November, but we probably have to spend a little bit more this November in those training costs. Grants look good. Everything else pretty much down to quo. We've been lucky. Not lucky.
Any questions for Brian?
I'll make a quick comment here, just to kind of put that final stamp on what Brian said. That $75,000 capital is coming out of fine collection, so that doesn't, that doesn't affect what we levy for. The increase, again, that 75, that 7,500 is more of a carryover than it is an increase, and we can use fund balance for that if that's something that we so choose. Because that will not carry over into next fiscal year, as, you know, FY '23. It'll be more just getting caught up from what we saw before. And then that 3,000 is also fine collection. So I know that there's, you know, it is reporting a little bit higher of an increase than than what really is truthfully going to be an increase for the general fund, so.
So the 3,000 isn't split, the 3,000 is your split of the... Or, yes, yes, correct.
Thank you.
They're actually paying four, we're paying three. Which is quite a change. We had been, Kim had worked with me in years past on other entities, and they were going to charge us by ourselves 20 a year, and that was, that was an implementation fee of about 40. And so that was a little too, a little too much. So we waited it out, and thankfully we did, because we found a much cheaper comparable product, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions before we move on?
No.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, Mike, I'm going to, I'm going to put this on the board, and then I'll let you kind of take it from here.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Mike Henderson, Director with Black Hawk County Conservation. I guess I'm very happy to report, I know that the theme here with almost everyone is COVID and the issues that it's created for everyone revenue-wise. And had I been giving this talk in April, I probably would be saying the same thing, because it looked pretty much like gloom and doom. But at least for conservation, we've just been shocked at what's happened. And we've always known how important recreation, outdoor recreation was and the facilities that we provide. But I think people started using those facilities, our trails and our parks and our campgrounds and our cabins and our lodges, that have never used them before because of the situation that COVID put out there. And so, all that being said, at least with regards to FY '21, we are in magnificent shape revenue-wise. Our camping is up, our cabins are up, our lodge rentals are up. Just almost everything that we draw revenue from is up. And we take so many reservations online, so what we see, we get a good view of what's in the future. Our cabins are just booked solid. Our lodges are booked solid. Everyone is just jumping on this. So from that standpoint, at least I can provide some good news from a revenue standpoint from conservation. We're doing well. And so, I guess a little positive spin that way. All that being said, then, I'll just very broad of our operating expense, our operating revenue, and then we can back up and go... I'll answer any questions that we have. Nikki's here, if I have something. Starting with the operating expenses. You will see there that we ended up almost $18,000 above what we had last year as far as operating expenses. That can be attributed to one thing. Couple of years ago, we started working with the Iowa DNR on the restoration program for Casey Lake. Casey Lake has been on the impaired waters list for a few years now. And we know what a backlog there is with the DNR to work on those restoration projects. We knew we had to get at least on the list. And so for a couple of years, we've, we're actually about two full years, we've been working with them. We haven't made a lot of progress, but we're working with them, and we knew it was going to be like this. So that 17,000, a little over 17,000, can be attributed to a $40,000 engineering project that we may have to spend money on. The engineering for the lake restoration, Casey Lake, the grand total is $340,000, or that's what the DNR has told us. They will cover 75% of that cost. 25% of that cost will be our responsibility. So the grand total would be 80. Our understanding is, the way they move, if they even get to us in fiscal year 2022, they probably will only get as far as them needing half of the money from us, so half of that 80,000. So we put $40,000 in there. It's 40,000 that we've never had to worry about before. But we absolutely have to be ready. If they get to us, and we really hope they do, we've got to be ready to cover our part of the, at least the initial engineering and planning for that lake restoration. So that's where that came from overall. Knowing that we had that, Nikki and I did go through our line items on the expense side, and we did some cutting. None of them were huge, but we did some cutting, knowing that those problems were going to be there. And it was some things like fuel, we cut it a couple thousand dollars. Our advertising, we cut, you know, $1,000, $1,400, something like that. So they weren't, none of them were big, but they all helped. And it helped get that down to where that number is. Otherwise, I think everything else that we've got on our operating expense side is really pretty justified, and I think we've done a good job with that. Very quickly over to just a broad look at the revenue side of it. Obviously, you know, I've told you for FY '21 anyway, the revenue is great. We expect it to be that way in '22 with our campgrounds and all those things. Obviously, the light show is a tremendous success, and so you'll see on that side that we're, we're actually, you know, about $39,000 ahead in revenue from where we were with FY '21. So our revenue side looks good. The 17,000, at least we feel like we've made it up on the revenue side. And so we feel good about that. Quickly back to the operating expense side. I did send, I did send an email to all of you with regards to the light show. When we went into that thing, we had no idea that it was going to be anything like that. We, we were just trying to make up some ground somewhere. We didn't run the haunted house. We were not able to have Under the Harvest Moon in person. We knew that Maple syrup festival was, was not going to be able to take place in March. Those are major fundraisers for us, and we just knew we had to try to do something. We had no idea it was going to be anything like this. Once we saw what it was going to be, and I'll admit to you, when we started this thing, we knew it was not going to be a one-and-done thing. We were going to continue to do this. But we figured it would grow, kind of like the haunted house did over all those years. We figured it would grow. We didn't know it would explode. But we really do have a tiger by the tail, and I think that, I just felt like we needed to address it immediately. So within that email, I did ask that maybe we would be able to add, add some money that we could invest in that light show for next year. Doesn't have to be huge. I think it's something that can be done gradually over the years. Eventually, you know, and it's really down to buying lights and displays and things like that. And at some point, you know, you, you don't do that anymore. It's just really just a labor to put them up, change things around a little bit, and you move forward. So those expenses wouldn't be there, you know, for year after year after year after year. What we put in there, we submitted this budget before Thanksgiving. What we put in our line item to cover expenses for the light show was $3,000, which is typically about what we put in for the haunted house. What we, when we, when we found out what we had on our hands, we went back, we did a little more thinking. We've asked some for advice from professionals and some different people around the community. But what I, what I'm going to just put out there, and I'm, I'm open to, we do this, you don't have to do this. We thought if we could put another $12,000 in that line item, so that line item would go from 3,000 to, to 12,000, or to $15,000 with the $12,000 addition. We would be able to, one of the main issues is we would be able to extend our electric access, electricity access to different parts of Hickory Hills Park, which would allow us to expand that light show, make it different, make it better, make it bigger. And so, that's what I'm throwing out there. At that point, I'll, I'll, I'll stop. And with regards to our expense side, I'm open to any questions. And then we can move to the, to the revenue side if we have questions that way. So I'm kind of opening the floor up now, and we'll get to the capital after that, I guess.
I think we're waiting on capital. What line item are you talking about right now, Mike, when you're talking about increasing? What line item was that?
It's recreation, it's the recreation line item.
Under operating?
Yes. 0590. Recreation craft and supply.
And you got it currently at, what, 3,600?
Yeah, 6,900, Mike.
Yeah, 6,900, but it is including the other recreational fundraisers that we do, too. There's cost of that. For the light show itself, we had $3,000 in there to cover costs for that light show.
Now, the, the request for additional funding, is that for actual light show stuff, or is that for putting electricity in?
We think about $5,000 of it would be running new electric lines and pedestals. And then the rest of it, we would be using for actual displays themselves, lights, different things that are out there.
And how much would that improve the show, then?
We think it'll improve it a lot based on this. We are doing a lot of things, we're going to do a lot of things on our own. We built a lot of things in a really big hurry back in October and November. So we're going to spend this, this year, as we, as we move on, building things, manufacturing things, and fabricating things ourselves. And then with the, quite honestly, those lights are, the good LED lights are expensive. And we found that out right away. But with what we build, and then being able to cover those things with our lighting systems and that we purchase, we think it'll expand the show.
Would you estimate, you think, coming out there this year?
We have, we have those totals right here. Here's what we did. These were the grand totals for the light show. There were 5,765 cars went through. That was at $10,000. So there was, you know, $57,000 that way at $10 a car. We also had a donation box up. No one had to contribute to that. But over the eight nights, people contributed $1,939.77 in donations. So we were right at $60,000 worth of revenue in eight nights with that show. One of the other things that will enhance this, this light show is the fact that we are working with businesses. We think all the businesses that participated will be back. They had to move in a, in a very fast motion, just like we did. We've already gotten comments back from them that they go, oh, we have greater, we're going to be so much bigger and better next year with what they're going to do. And that's no expense to us. They're doing all that work. So we do think that those businesses, they're going to be just like us. They're going to have time now to plan. And so we're going to have a pretty, pretty different and enhanced light show, just with what those companies are doing, what those businesses are doing, we feel, anyway.
Yeah, I think it's neat. It's a, it's a great showcase for Black Hawk County. I understand the revenue part of it, and that's kind of fantastic, but at the same token, making it such a great showcase for Black Hawk County, I'd like to see everybody have the opportunity to see it and kind of broadcast our county. It's a good program. It don't surprise me that you guys did something like this, because it seems like every time you guys enter into a new program, it turns out to be a success. And I think a lot of that's contributed to, you do a lot of your own work, you don't outsource things. You're actually helping other departments in a lot of different areas, too. So I really applaud you guys out there at the Conservation. And I'd be curious to see what the rest of the Board says about that increase. But I really, I think you guys really hit on something this year. And it, I know the revenue is nice, but I want everybody to see it out there, too, you know?
And I agree completely, and, and it seems like, you know, we, we're kind of revenue-based. I mean, that's what we're here for. It's not just, it's not just our county conservation system, it's every county conservation system. That, that's how they, they move forward, that's how they expand, and that's how they enhance their programs, whether it's their educational programs or whatever they do. So we're all in this boat. So it's just sort of in our nature. And again, yeah, I agree with you, Tom. I don't want this to sound like it's just about money, because I'll tell you what we found out when we were down there. Especially when the cars were lined up, and it took them 45 minutes to get through or whatever. And, you know, again, I think I've mentioned this, but, but, you know, windows were being rolled down, and, and kids were, were saying Merry Christmas to each other, and cars, and things like that. And every night, our staff came back and they would, they'd say, this was just an amazing feeling to have so many people so happy and so thrilled to have this opportunity to do that. So I agree with you. Yeah, we talk about the money. I almost feel guilty about talking about the money, because it was more, it was as heartwarming to everybody as anything else. And it was what the community needed, so.
And that's the part I really was looking for, and people know how successful that was. This was the first year, correct?
Absolutely, yep.
Yeah, for you guys to put that together like that, so I just commend you guys out there for that, I really do.
I appreciate it, and we, you know, I will say we kind of stumbled onto it, and it was and, and again, that and be happy to if, if this isn't something that we want to do, I get it, and we'll go ahead with it, believe me, in one way or the other.
I, I support. Go ahead, Tom.
What was that, Tom? I'm sorry.
How do you get the lights on the buffaloes?
One of our, one of our thought processes is we want to extend electricity out so that we can do the fence coming in. So as people wade along there, we, we really think that fence is a great place, as long as a buffalo don't tear it down. But we have had requests about that. Can we light the buffalo? So far, no good ideas yet.
Yeah, okay.
Mike, I'd say I support the line item increase. It was amazing what you guys did on such a short turnaround, just pulling resources together. And as someone that prices, Christmas lights a lot, myself, actually. I've looked into those professional vignettes, as I'm sure you are, and they're thousands of dollars each. And so it's really great that you're planning to stretch those dollars by just making a lot of this yourself. And so I think it actually makes for a more interesting display as well. And so it all makes sense to me.
Hey, Mike, you want to increase line item 0590? It's at 6,900. You want to, you want to bump that up to what? What amount?
We would be adding 12,000, Dan.
Okay. Are you going to?
On top of the 69?
On top of the 69.
Okay.
So are you proposing you're also going to increase one revenue line item?
No, we would not be increasing the revenue line item, but, but it's still, if we put that 12 in there and you looked at the increase in our revenue, it would still basically kind of zero itself out.
Gotcha, okay.
So Mike, when you mentioned that you were increasing it from three to 12, is the, the three's not in here?
The, the three is kind of hidden in that 69, Linda.
Yeah, okay.
Because when we, under that line item, we have expenses for other programs like Maple syrup festival, or Halloween hikes, or any of the fundraisers that we do. So those costs are hidden in there. And again, it's like when we had the haunted house, it was, we always had 2,500 to $3,000 in there, because we never knew what we were going to run into. Would we need to buy wood or anything like that to develop some of the rooms? Would we need to buy a display to make a room work? We never knew what we had, so we always had a little bit in there if we had to go ahead and invest in that show. And, and so that's what we did with the light show. We just put $3,000 in there. That could have been used to cover extension cords, maybe, or something like that, just things that we, you know, might run into along the way. Just to get us back up and running again for next year.
I support it, because I want to see it expand and grow.
I support it 100%.
I do, too. Great program.
Yep.
And I think regarding the price that you had on there, I think all the comments I heard, I think people thought $10 was very reasonable. So I support the fact that you're trying to generate revenue with this, and think by the turnout, yeah, we had a great response, so.
Yep. And, and, Ben, I, if, if we would come in contact with any organization or any group that would say, you know, we have these people and they just can't afford that, or, but we had, we talked about this a little bit, and we felt like, we certainly understand there are people out there that that $10 might really be a problem for. We get that. But in another sense, we think that if that's a problem, maybe their bigger problem would be transportation to even see the show. And, and, and that might be the restricting factor a little more than the $10. But we absolutely would be, we'd love to work with any organization or any group that could put people together that wanted to see it and didn't have that ability, and could bring down buses or vans or anything that they wanted to, to bring down there so that they could see that. And believe me, we would, we'd get them through it. Trust me.
Yeah, that might be a great idea, too, to look at some ways that we could support those efforts. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Mike, I'll work with you on the, on increasing that line item and getting updated numbers to you.
Okay, no, that'll be great. Thank you, James.
Good job.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Any other, any other questions for Conservation?
Not here.
Thank you.
Just keep up the great work you're doing.
The last thing that I wanted to touch base on was Mike's capital is decreasing by 118, almost $119,000. So that is also helping offset those, the increase in salary benefits as, as well as the operating expenses. So overall, I know we'll talk about capital on a later date, but I did just want to, you know, kind of point that out and just have you guys have a quick glance at it, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, without further ado, if that's, if there's no more questions, we'll move on to the Engineers' Office.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning. Do you want to go to that top box there, James, or I can, and then I would?
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's no problem. Right now, so we are expecting revenues to increase $38,374. The salary benefits are actually decreasing. There's been some, there's been a little bit of turnover that is, that is reflecting a decrease of 43,000, almost 43,100. There is a decrease in operating expenses by 219,409. And then you'll see an increase in capital for a grand total of an increase of 0.5%, or 23,127. Yeah, and then, and then Kathy has a presentation, so we can always go back to this if they need to.
Much of what I'm going to say in my slides is covered in your spreadsheets, James. Next slide, Kim. So, good morning. These are the four items I wanted to talk to you about in my presentation this morning, and I am going to talk about capital items this morning. So some of our overall budgeting, operation costs, my capital equipment, FTEs, and then and then some strategic planning that I want to talk to you about. I'm sorry, just a minute.
Tom, are you hearing everything all right? Because I see our internet connection gets unstable on occasion.
If she could just speak up a little bit.
Gotcha.
Where'd they dig that up at? James?
We're, we're working on it here.
Are we talking capital now? I thought you were holding off on capital.
Yeah, we're going to hold off on capital. Kathy just wanted to include it on the presentation. We can make a capital decision on a, on a later date. I have capital scheduled for January 14th. So it's actually going to be a week from today is when we can, when we can kind of go through capital on a, on a more deeper level. But it is something that is an increase in the budget and therefore she wanted to include it on the presentation and just kind of, you know, kind of gloss over things, so.
And also, I can't be here in person next week, so I, I'd just as soon talk to you in person. So if you don't mind, I'll just show you some photos of concerning capital this morning. Anyway, thank you, Kim. So I just wanted to talk to you about some of the highlights of our operating budget. We do this every year. As you know, we have a, we have a large operating budget. We have a very large system to maintain here in Blackhawk County, just like many other counties. Our rock budget, so the rock we place on the roads, we're keeping that request the same as it was in fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '20 at 1.48 million. And this includes all of our rock. And we, we code rock. The DOT wants us to code it. We keep track of it from different, different applications. This includes all of the rock we place on the gravel road system. It includes spot rocky, it includes shoulder rock, it includes rock that maintenance places under our bridges as revetment, et cetera. So it's all of our sources of rock. We're going to be keeping that cost the same. And you can see that is a very large cost for us. For fuel, for FY '22, we are lowering that to $280,000. It was $300,000 in this fiscal year in FY '21. Our repairs for all of our equipment, we're keeping that consistent with FY '21 at $350,000. Unfortunately, that does continue to be a really large part of our budget. This newer equipment is not, you have to be almost a software engineer to figure out some of the wiring and some of the computer codes that operate these, these trucks in particular nowadays.
What's the repairs for, Kathy? I mean, are they on vehicle repairs?
Yes, this would be our motor grader repairs, our, our single and tandem axle dump truck repairs, our specialized-
Do they currently, don't a lot of that inventory which we've been kind of buying every year, doesn't a lot of that have warranty on it yet?
Yes, the mo, it does, Tom. The motor graders in particular, particular come with the best warranty right now. Excuse me, that come, they come with an eight-year warranty. However, for example, our crane that we bought used, that doesn't come with any type of warranty. Brand-new tandem and single axle dump trucks come with a one or two-year warranty on the powertrain, the frame, et cetera. The trucks continue to not have a very long warranty. We have other pieces of equipment that are aging, our, our, some of our specialized equipment, such as our excavator and our grate all machine, they, they are not covered by warranty anymore or didn't have a long one to begin with. So this is just a continuing increase over time to maintain and maintain these, this new equipment. Emissions has become a very expensive and very sensitive part of our equipment in this day and age.
Do you know where FY '20 ended up for repairs in the budget at the end of the year?
Yeah, just a minute. Carol may have that handy. I'm looking in my, my notes here.
She online?
I thought she was.
Fiscal year '20 did end, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Fiscal year '20 did end at 236,000 and some odd dollars in there as well.
We had that left over at the end of the year?
I'm sorry, that was what we spent on repairs, 236,000.
Out of how much? Is that the 352? Is that what you had budgeted for that year?
Yes.
So we had roughly $100,000 left over the end of the year?
79.
79.
How come the difference? It would be about 116 from what you told us the numbers were. How come it's 79, James?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at that wrong. Your, yeah, sorry. My, my screen was not, my screen wasn't showing me the, the columns on top. The 79 is what they have right now.
Yeah, what we-
Expensed. So, I'm sorry.
Or what they spent this year so far?
So far, yes, yep.
So we could consider lowering that, for example, to replace a transmission and a motor grader is $30,000. And that does happen to redo, excuse me, to replace transmissions. Any major work on these engines can easily run into 15, 20, $20,000 in a, in a quick hurry. So we, I guess that's why we're asking to keep it at the 352. As you know, any money we don't spend goes back into our fund balance. It's not, not being wasted, of course. It goes back into the fund balance.
Yeah, I agree with that. If there's, normally in other budgets goes back into reserves, which obviously we tax for it. Here, in this case, it just goes back into the road use budget. As far as the repairs and Kathy, the only thing that you are taking out of that line item is repairs, you're not spending it on other items?
Right.
When there's excess money in there?
Correct. We, as I think we've told you before, the DOT, because we are accountable to the Blackhawk County as well as the Iowa DOT for use of this state gas tax, there are some very methodical, very particular codes. It's a very detailed accounting system that we have to keep for the Iowa DOT in particular, the New World system. And so we're very particular about the way our expenses are coded. We code them to each piece of, piece of equipment, each location in the county, for example, for our materials. So yes, we can easily have that audited, but we, we feel that we are in keeping with the DOT requirements to, to be accountable to the taxpayers by coding it properly to each equipment and only keeping it necessary to that equipment.
Okay. And then if it's left over, it just rolls back into road use?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and as you describe it, only a couple of those types of repairs, those larger ones, could easily take us to that or needing that full amount.
Right.
So you're saying the trucks we buy, we only get a year warranty on?
So I'm going to have to go back and look at, for example, the Freightliner that we've gotten last year, the Freightliners we're, we're waiting on, they have, I think it's just a two-year warranty on the engine and the powertrain and maybe a five-year warranty on the frame. And maybe Carol could check on that as we're speaking. But it's, it's not like the motor graders where we're getting bumper to bumper on eight years now from John Deere on a motor grader. They're still lying. I have no idea if they'll ever catch up to that type of warranty. We don't require them to have something like that. I guess it's not an industry standard. It would dramatically increase the cost of those machines, obviously.
What's a, what's it cost to have a longer-term warranty on it? Have you checked into that? You might be able to save money that way. You know, you can get that on a car, when you buy a car.
Right.
Three-year warranty, you can extend it out to five years if you pay for it. You might be wiser to do that than to spend money that you're spending the way you are.
We can definitely check into that because as you'll see next year, we need to buy two trucks as well. So we'll be putting more specifications together and would have the opportunity to revise those specifications for a warranty, for example.
It'd be good to know. I think that that would be nice.
Okay.
Information, so thanks.
So moving on, we, in our computer budget, we, we're requesting money to, to move all laptops, all computers to Windows 10. I believe we still have a, maybe half a dozen devices that are still on Windows 7, for example. We need to move ahead and get all of those converted to Windows 10, for example. We're also, I think we've told you that we need to, we want to have all employees have an internet account, or excuse me, an email account. HR is requesting this, that they be allowed to get personnel information through an email account. None of our outshops, none of our secondary roads employees have an email account except for about four or five of them. So all of the guys in the outshops, they don't have access to the internet in those shops. We, we need to start moving in that direction, looking at ways for them to get that. We feel that we can do training that way. HR is asking that we start having training available to people over the internet so that we don't have to gather for that training. So we're increasing or we are adding money to keep our computer usage improved it.
How much are we adding?
That 552?
Are we going to look at the, James, are we going to, she's doing the PowerPoint. Are we going to see the operating budget numbers?
Yes.
You sure can.
That's where some of the questions, you can see the increases.
Right, yep. And I, I have that spreadsheet up on my computer, but unfortunately, we just can't share both computers' screens, so.
Well, when she gets done with the PowerPoint, maybe we want to see the operating budget, if, if there's any increases in different areas.
Absolutely.
How many people Kathy's out there that don't have internet or email access?
I want to say it's 26 or 27.
Do we have, we do have computers out there now in the various shops?
No. They, there's no computers in their shops. They're, we used to have-
About a few years ago, we moved some of our older computers out there.
Oh, I should, I'm sorry. At Longfellow, we have, our main maintenance facility, our superintendent, our supervisor, both of our mechanics, our service mechanic, they all have a computer at a, at a workstation. But our outshops, LaPorte, Hudson, Gilbertville, Elk Run, they do not have computers at those locations.
Do those individuals, would they order parts? Or does it go through your office or does it go through the Longfellow office?
It goes, all of that would go through the Longfellow office.
Okay. So they wouldn't actually order any parts on the internet?
Correct. Right.
The others, okay.
We, we see it more as a way of them having access to their payroll, their accounts for their sick leave.
Sure.
Information like that.
Through email, you mean?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Right. And then training opportunities that we could have them-
We get that, the training, can we get that through the IT office or ISAC or even PDCM?
Yeah, so Deb had, before Deb left, she gave us all access to NeoGov, which has a lot of good training on safety aspects that we would like to take advantage and have an annual checklist, similar to what conservation does. Okay, everybody needs to have this type of training every year. And they, it's 10 minutes on NeoGov and, and they could do that throughout the year, for example, at the end of the workday or the beginning of the workday, or those types of things is how we envision this going. We do have a committee set up with office staff here as well as secondary roads employees to, to start working on this.
I think email access is important really because for the various reasons you mentioned, plus even work construction really from the main office. I think it's a good idea.
This gives everybody, every individual then their own-
That's the ideal, idea that every employee would have access to a, either by phone or an actual computer in the shop. Or, we haven't worked all that out yet, but that's-
What the plan is, what they're planning to do, okay.
Do they current, do they currently, Kathy, have phones, iPhones?
Many of our, it seems like every person has a phone nowadays, but they're not county phones. It's just-
Okay, that's what I meant, company phones.
Yeah, just a handful, our, a handful of our employees in secondary roads are provided a phone that we, that we pay for.
Okay.
Moving on, we've, as you know, solar panels have been installed on four of our buildings. We didn't show any savings from this, direct savings, because we know we're going to save money on electricity. But we're also, we may potentially have to provide, have an internet service provider now going to these outshops for a monthly fee. So we're just keeping those, our utility bills, constant for, for next fiscal year until we see how this works out with getting internet access to the shops.
So the, so the extra from utilities, you're going to use it in another area and internet?
Right. We would consider internet access, for example, we have internet access at Longfellow, of course, through Cedar Falls Utilities. We pay them a monthly fee. I believe that that goes into our utility portion of the budget. So yes, we're just, we would use the savings, electrical savings to pay for our internet connections if, if that's how it's, if we've decided that's what we want to do is get internet connections at the shops, or maybe we want to buy a phone for everybody. We haven't decided that yet.
So they'd fall under that line item of utilities or do you have a separate line item?
Internet would definitely be a utility. I guess, I'm not quite sure, phone for everyone would still be in that line item. Like, maybe James can comment on that.
Yeah, if, if we have, if we have phones for every single person, I don't think that would be on the, on the utility line item. We can look at that to see if it would be better if we placed it in, in a different line item. But regardless, they would essentially offset anyway, so.
Yeah. Are the utilities, are they paid by road use money too, Kathy?
They can be. I believe most of our expenses are eligible. I'm not, maybe Carol could answer that, if, if that would come from the local portion of our road use tax money or if that comes from state or if it makes any difference. I'm, I don't have a good handle on that question.
It doesn't come from tax dollars, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm not entirely sure of.
Because the solar panels, any savings from the solar panels did come from tax dollars.
Right, so-
Came out of the reserves.
As you know, you, you, the county provides us with property tax money. So it's, it could come out of that. It all gets commingled. So I don't know if there's any-
Yeah, I, I mean, I, it's, it's not like we keep that money separate. It's, it's really our contribution to the secondary roads fund that doesn't, and, and, and we kind of decide on that percentage as, as far as the, the general, as far as the rural goes. And so that is just one contribution to the secondary roads. We don't keep that separate, so it is kind of all commingled. And, and I don't know if that's, there's a way to separate that out.
This'll show up on the operating budget, James?
Yes.
I guess I just don't like the term savings when you spend it. In three words later, you're spending it, so it's not really savings anymore.
And we won't know for probably a year at least what, what the solar costs are going to be. I mean, estimating even, but, so we've got to look at that too.
Yeah, I agree. It'll take- It'll take, you know, a full year for us to go, go through the seasonal changes and see any savings from the solar panels.
Yeah.
But I, I just wanted to point out that.
Yeah.
We're, we are, we do need to spend money on getting access for our employees to have a.
Yeah, I agree.
I have to be that, I know.
Yeah, okay.
And hopefully, the savings are what they said they were gonna be. We spent a million dollars.
Yep. And we'll tell.
And then lastly, professional service is one area that we are reducing significantly for fiscal year '22 over fiscal year '21. And that's just due to our, to different types of projects, not, not needing professional services as much for the upcoming, the next two or three years of our construction projects. So we are decreasing that by seven. It's going to $700,000, thereabouts, to, from $900,000, excuse me. So, next slide, Kim. And as you know, as I just said, we do have a massive, we do have massive infrastructure, miles and miles of roads and bridges we must maintain. We obviously need a large fleet to maintain that system. And that means we need to be buying, replacing, maintaining all of this equipment, replacing large pieces of equipment every year. So of course, we have a large capital item, capital item request every year. So this is just the five-year average. We usually average between $600 and $1.2 million every year. And as we just said, what we don't spend, it goes back into our fund balance. At the end of fiscal year '22, we are projecting that we will have a fund balance of approximately $3 million. If we spend all the money we're, we're asking for, we believe we'll have a fund balance of $3 million. Next slide. This is pretty much just repeating. This next fiscal year '22, we are asking for a, a capital expenditure of $1.105 million. Next slide. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to go.
Kathy, real quick, on your capital, I wanna clarify that, so everybody understands. That $1 million comes from where?
So that comes from a combination of what's in our Secondary Road Fund. So we receive money from the Iowa DOT.
Right.
In the different forms. We receive money from Blackhawk County, from property taxes. And we, that goes into our Secondary Road Fund. And then we, we spend that money on, we also receive money from the Iowa DOT for construction projects, like our farm-to-market account. We're not talking about any of that money today. I don't wanna confuse those types of funds. And those, those types of funds are primarily what we talk to you about when we talk about our five-year plan. So that, that's money that we, in our farm-to-market fund, for example, that's money we have to, we have to spend that on our roads or bridges.
But there's, any of our money that we receive through the county, whether it be whatever program, none of it says it's designated for capital projects, does it?
Right, right, there's, right, there.
Okay, if you spend $600,000 on capital this year, out of that $1.4, the rest of it would go where? Into roads?
Well, go into our fund balance, and then we can take care of that.
Road, bridges, or whatever.
Right, we would pay operating expenses. We can, we can transfer money to the farm-to-market system. We can pay for local construction out of that money. There's a lot of flexibility with what a county can do with that money, just because we have a lot of needs, a lot of different types of expenses.
Yeah, thank you.
So I, I did wanna talk about the tandem dump trucks. We want to purchase one to, to get rid of one that is currently in our, our backup fleet. We have, obviously, we have frontline trucks that we use to plow snow, haul rock. We have single-axle dump trucks and tandem-axle dump trucks. We have about 20, 21 or 22 of those. We have several of them that sit in the back line that are used as a backup, so when we have a breakdown, we can have one of those be in service. We typically take one from the back line and buy it, or, excuse me, replace that, and then one of the existing trucks goes into the back line then. So that's what we'd like to do. We need to move, replace one on the front line, and we also need to add an additional tandem axle dump truck. And this is primarily because we are paving Grundy Road. Grundy Road will be five new miles of asphalt pavement that must be plowed with a dump, a snowplow, a dump truck. We need a tandem dump truck because it's a long ways out to Grundy Road, and it's a long distance to plow. So we wanna have as much capacity with sand and salt in the back of the truck as we can get. We have a, a person in, in Waterloo who can drive that truck. We just need another frontline truck for them to drive.
So what's he doing now?
So we currently have 30, 31 staff in Secondary Roads, including our supervisor and our superintendent. Those two are not, do not go into a plow unless it's absolutely necessary. And we have our two mechanics. We cannot have them plowing snow. They need to be available to repair. We had two other people that were not in a snowplow routinely. We are going to have one of those people go into a snowplow now. So just about every one of our employees has to be in a plow when it's, or a mortar grader plowing snow, when, when we need to do that. So we had one or two people that weren't being utilized doing that, so one of them will now do that.
How did you plow Grundy Road now, or before?
So it was, it's plowed with a mortar grader because it's a gravel road now.
So is that gonna free a person up, then, that they don't have to plow that with them?
So the mortar grader districts are 60 to 80 miles each. This would remove five miles from that, and actually, that district, those five miles are split into two districts. Our individual to the north plows three miles, and then we have a person that plows south of that, and he plows the south two miles. So it's really not gonna make that much difference for our mortar grader operator in, in, throughout the year, because it was chopped up already, the route. But now, we'll need to send a truck over to that road to plow it with the snowplow. So you can see that these are $210,000 each, is what we're budgeting, and these would be fully equipped with plows and wings and the hydraulics for that.
So we don't have an existing truck route that can go that, over to that 5,000, or five miles added?
Right, we have, like I said, we have a number of frontline trucks, and we have.
How many backup trucks we got that you're talking about, that aren't used?
Wayne, can you answer that? How many back, trucks do we have in backup?
We have three, and typically, they're all being used while other trucks are broken down.
So we have three being repaired, then, currently?
Right, so the three that are in backup, they'll get moved throughout the season to be a frontline while the frontlines are being repaired.
Being repaired, okay.
And unfortunately, we usually have one or two backups out on the road, just due to breakdowns or needing some type of repair. But now, we need another, a new, an additional frontline truck for Grundy. Okay, next slide, Kim.
Thank you.
So what we, this is one, the one truck we would like to trade in. It's number 45. It's a 1998 Ford truck with 502,000 miles. It's got some rusting on the chassis, rust jacking. We've talked about that in the past. You can see, this is a picture of the dash that's being held together with bungee straps, just because it's been shaken so much over the years. It's very difficult for these older Ford trucks, for us to get parts. They're, I think they're not being made anymore. We have to go through after-market companies to get these parts, so they are getting difficult to find now that they're not being made. So this is just a matter of replacing our aging fleet, trading this one in and purchasing a new one.
So in reality, is that even safe to drive?
We, I would say we, our mechanics keep a close eye on that. We've come to you before with the emergency requests for trucks because the frames are rusting, and I'm pretty comfortable with, if they're, if the truck is out on the road, that they're, that they're safe to drive. Do, do you wanna add anything about that, Wayne?
No, I did that here, Craig, I'm sorry.
I said, is that tandem truck, 45, even safe to drive?
Yes, it is safe to drive, but, you know, give it another year, and, and it won't be.
Wayne, how much was that truck used last winter?
Fair frequently. It was used quite a bit. When our other truck got wrecked last spring, this was used almost every day.
And so, going back to these trucks, okay, so that email you sent us out a couple days ago about the heaters, and you take the trucks inside, and the snow melts off of them, do you wash them off, then? Do we wash them off, then, and clean them?
Do you wanna talk about that, Wayne?
We wash them off, we try to get them washed after every storm. Because when we get back-to-back snowstorms, it can be a little while before we get them washed up. Generally, it's after every snowfall.
Just a wise thing to do would be to wash the underside of it, right?
Yes, yeah, and that we do.
That would make them last longer.
Yes, that, yeah, kinda keep in mind, too, that they're, they're hauling this salt and sand and running at it, so.
But you got two guys in the shop that ain't doing nothing, that, that one's gonna be in a truck now. Why can't they wash, wash, wash these trucks and keep them where they're decent? We got, how many vehicles, we get calls, get calls about that all the time, all these vehicles sitting across the street. We should have a place for those, too, so they're not sitting out in elements.
Does this truck have stainless steel box, Kathy?
Can you answer that, Wayne, number?
Yes, it does.
It should be good, right?
The stainless steel box, the floor of it is starting to get rusty. The stainless steel is on the sides, and the bottom is the hard steel.
Okay, I'm really surprised we have a 1998 Ford with all the trucks we've been buying over the years.
So do we take, Wayne, do we take that box off, the old trucks, if they're still good? Do we save those, or are they worth saving, any of them?
Generally, by the time it's traded in time, the boxes are now worth saving.
All right, okay, kinda like 45.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the mortar graders. If you recall, we purchased the three Volvos in 2012, and it's getting, it's 10 years now since they've, it will be 10 years now since we've had those. Some of, they are not the oldest mortar graders in the fleet. However, some of the issues that we've had with the Volvos over the years, you can see those fenders on the Volvos. John Deere's don't have fenders, and so it's very difficult to put chains on the Volvo mortar graders. And that's always been something that we've had to deal with. And, you know, in a bad snowstorm, bad snow events, we wanna be able to put chains on a mortar grader. So we would really like, we wanna start replacing, need to start replacing the three Volvos. We'd like to replace one this fiscal year, or coming fiscal year in FY '22, and then probably two in FY '23. There's other issues with the Volvos, the electrical systems, like much of the equipment nowadays is very sensitive. If sand and salt get in any of the, the wiring, that can be very difficult to diagnose the, the repair issues. And the brake lines are starting to corrode, so we feel it's time to start replacing the Volvo mortar graders.
They have steering wheel, Kathy, or are they the other drive?
Those have a steering wheel, right, Wayne?
Yes, they do.
And we're going back to the other way now, or no?
The, the new Deere's have a steering wheel, but they also have the joysticks in them with all the controls in it.
But you know, at one time, Wayne, I remember when we bought the Volvos, we were really happy with them.
Yeah, yeah, and the older.
We took them over Deere's and Caterpillar, if I recall.
Yes, we did.
Well, and they were the low bid, too. We've gotten great service from the company in Cedar Falls that we got them from. That's been very.
They're out of business now, aren't they?
I thought that they were bought by Housby. I think they just changed ownerships, but we still get service from them.
I don't think they make them in the United States anymore.
Yeah, they, these two, I think, were, weren't they?
Yes.
Or to a point in, with, where the John, the Volvos inferior to the John Deere, Greater, it sounds like.
Yes, that'd be awesome.
Yes.
Okay.
At one time, Dan, they wanted steering wheels. We had to have, what, Greater had a steering wheel, and Caterpillar didn't have a steering wheel. Now, I think we kinda flip-flopped to the other way.
Yes, as our workforce becomes younger, they're more receptive to the joysticks. And like Wayne said, the, the John Deere's have a small steering wheel.
Yeah.
Maybe like 10 inches in diameter. It's not a large steering wheel. And then they have the joystick controls.
It was told to the board that it was safety, the reason why we wanted the steering wheels, because our guys stand up. At least, that's what we were told years ago.
Yeah, it does allow, without the steering wheel, you can, like, stand up, take a break, and.
Yep.
Yeah.
Or even driving.
Any kind of ax up as a backup with the steering wheel, if the pilot control goes out on the joystick.
Of course, the only thing you say here, Kathy, I noticed, you said, like, purchase a John Deere. We're gonna bid it, aren't we?
Yes, so what we would like to do for next year is we would like to buy a 772. And I, if you recall back to our conversation earlier this year, the 672 is a, one model of John Deere that, that we purchased just four or five months ago. It has a little bit less horsepower. We would like to purchase a 772 next, next time. Those have 20 more horsepower in each gear. They're, those, that model is more typical of what we had been buying for a number of years. They do cost about $20,000 more. The extra horsepower is helpful in areas where there's heavy drifting. This mortar grader would go to the district that is just north of Waterloo, for example, the Leversee Road area. Over to 218, we have a pretty good hill, a Mount Vernon over there, that has, is helpful to have more horsepower, a larger bit of horsepower. So we would like to budget for the larger machine for fiscal year '22. And we will bid it out, but, I'm sorry.
Are we gonna bid it?
Absolutely, but it may be that we only get the one bid.
But you're definitely gonna bid the project.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, Tom?
You're gonna place bids out there for the machine, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, next slide, Kim. Okay, a semi-truck is another item that we are asking to be included in the budget. Our current semi-truck, what it's used for is it, it goes, it hauls around our lowboy, our trailer, that our crane sits on, or crane use, our older crane sat on. It hauls around our excavator, and if we have a breakdown of a mortar grader, it has to go, it can haul the mortar grader into the Longfellow shop for us. Currently, with our new crane, we have to hire PCI to move our crane. It weighs 90,000 pounds, just the crane itself. We have to hire PCI to move that because our tractor-trailer combination can't, we don't have enough axles on our trailer, for example, to move that. In looking at the age of our tractor, our semi-truck, excuse me, and our trailer, we would, we feel it's time to replace both of. would, we feel it's time to replace both of those items in the fleet. We're asking to purchase a used semi truck. And we're budgeting $100,000. We feel like, looking around at prices, we could get one for about this price range that would be 2015 or 2016, somewhere in those three to five year, or six years of age category.
I thought it took a, I thought it took a lowboy.
You broke up, Tom, what'd you say?
I thought it took a lowboy trailer to haul the excavator.
Yes, it does.
That's next up.
Yeah.
Do we have one?
No, that's next up.
The trailer, yes, it, it's my next item. Yes, we, we need to, we need the trailer to haul the excavator.
But I mean, do we currently have a lowboy trailer to haul it?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And we only, we only use that a couple of times a year, don't we?
So we use it a lot in the, the fall. What I talked to you about ditch cleanouts and we hire an excavator. We have three machines at once potentially cleaning out ditches. Anything with a track on it, a tracked excavator, our excavator, that, excuse me, the excavator that we rent, that has to be hauled around on this trailer. So it gets used probably every day, several times a day in the months of September and October.
The bridge crew also uses it to move all their items, bridge beams, caps. Yeah, and move their excavator around too when they need it.
Yeah, I know some of you have come out and seen the bridge crews at the beams we make. Those, the beams are hauled out on site on our trailer. And this semi truck pulls the trailer. So the engine is potentially, it's very weak. It's, it's probably best that we replace this truck in the very near future. So we're asking for a used semi truck. Next slide, Kim. So this is our, a picture of our current trailer. And it is used to haul the old cranes, which we don't have anymore. We don't haul those anymore, but it was used to haul the crane for years. It currently holds, moves around the excavators, bridge slabs, steel that goes out to the bridge sites. So it gets quite, gets quite a bit of use. The current trailer, it has large rust holes, you can see in that lower photo, some of the rust hole is below those, the two triangles there, right above the snow line. The main members in the trailer are resting through. And it's, our mechanic has told me that it's at the point that we're, we really need to stop using it in the very near future, that we're inspecting it at, at every usage. So we would like to, next slide, Kim. We would like to purchase a new trailer that has four axles on it so that we can haul our crane, as long as we're replacing this combination. We would like to be able to haul our, the new crane and not have to hire PCI to haul it for us. In addition to hauling the excavator and the bridge crew items. A new trailer, we've budgeted at $135,000. Next slide.
Kathy, I just have one more question on some of this equipment. Where are you getting all these estimates from? I mean, obviously, over the last year or two, I've noticed that we've been high on all our estimates, which left money over. Where are you, how are you coming up with estimates?
So we generally go through the dealer network, of course, John Deere motor graders. We talk to the dealer Murphys to get an estimate. We'll also talk to the CAT dealer. The, the, the single axle dump trucks, the tandem dump trucks, we would call Don's in Fairbank, Iowa, for example. There's Freightliner. There's a couple of other sources of trucks that we would call and get an estimate. And we tell them it's for budgetary purposes, so, you know, we expect it to be conservative. This trailer, for example, we would go through the dealer, El Torfer is a dealer of Trail King, for example, it would be one option for this trailer. So we typically go through the dealer network and get an estimate that way. Do you want to add anything, Wayne?
No, that's, that's correct, we go to dealerships.
So.
Thank you.
For the light duty pickups, we'll typically, you're probably aware that you can go online now and build your own pickups. We, a lot of times we'll do that for the pickup truck estimates. Sometimes talk to the dealerships, but the large equipment, we definitely talk to the dealers because that's how you have to buy them. So moving on to our pickup trucks, as you know, we have another large fleet. We have approximately 24 pickup trucks in secondary roads, the engineer's office. We also need to be replacing one or two of those every year, or one of those a year if we estimate that they lost, they last 15 to 20 years. This year, or this coming fiscal year, we'd like to replace two trucks, number 82 and 86. I have a couple of photos here. We would sell those two trucks. We would purchase two new half-ton four-by-four pickup trucks, extended cabs. They would come to the, a lot of times they'll come to the engineer's office for our inspectors. And then the, the black trucks would go, excuse me, out to the shops. And we're going to be changing the color scheme on these trucks over to all, all red trucks is what we want in the future. Next slide, Kim. So these, these are the two trucks that we are anticipating getting rid of. They're both from 2003. They were probably bought together, three-quarter ton diesel trucks. You can see rusting on both of the, both of the trucks, some frame rusting, some suspension issues with both of them. These were the years of Fords where if you wanted to do any type of extensive work on the engines or the transmissions, we've had to replace oil pans on these. You have to take off the entire cab to do that type of work. And they're just a real, that's, takes a lot of time for our people to do that. So we feel that this is a good, it's about time that we replace those. Do you want to add anything about that, Wayne?
Oh, I don't. I mean, the suspension and the steering linkage and all that is getting pretty loose for it all.
Okay.
How many trucks go home at night, Kathy?
You can correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne, but isn't it just you and Rick that take a truck home?
Yes, just two.
So I told you before that they're, Rick and Wayne are superintendent or supervisor. They're up at, they're on the roads at 4:00 AM in the winter checking, checking to see if they need to call the guys. And so that's one of the reasons why they take them home. Then they're, they both live out in the county, so then they're right there, able to start looking as soon as they leave their driveway, basically. Okay, I wanted to finish my capital items discussion and move on to FTEs. We had our account specialist retire just last week at the end of December, end of 2020. Sandy retired after 20 years. Carrie has taken her position and we have eliminated Carrie's position. And Carrie was our office specialist. In our office, particularly in the last, since I've been here the last 10 years, we've done so much to streamline digitally, everything is digital now. We, we of course had all, all of our projects, we had paperwork, all kinds of paperwork from the DOT that we would have to file. We have totally eliminated that. The DOT is almost all paper now. We have very much mimicked that. That was, that was probably about halftime for an FTE, was just to keep up with all that filing. We've really streamlined the payroll process to working with Kim and all the new world, the billing. All of our oversights over wait permits are now done entirely online. So we're just able to be much more efficient and we felt that the time was right with Sandy's retirement, that we could eliminate an FTE. Okay, next slide, Kim. So in, in thinking strategically about our FTEs, we are leaving, we're stopping, obviously, our payment, paying the office specialist right now. We are not, we did not budget to pay for an office specialist in FY '22. I would like the opportunity to look at our office and our needs, our future needs, starting in FY '23. And I'd like to take time to think about that over the next eight or nine months until we come to the next budget process. Next slide, Kim. So one of the, the areas that Black Hawk County, I think we can definitely improve upon is a roadside manager. About 15 or 20 years ago, we were leaders in this area, is what I've been told. Tallgrass Prairie Center has told me that. Since that time, we do have a roadside lead worker in secondary roads department. He is, he is the, the weed commissioner. We are able to do spraying, spot spraying of, of noxious weeds around guardrails. We are able to cut some brush. Many of our personnel have cut brush this time of year when there's, when it's slow, when they're not plowing snow. However, we, we haven't been very efficient at, at perhaps utilizing all of the resources that we have available to us. We have typically planted native prairie every year, several acres of that. But then, once it's planted, we don't do anything with it. And that could be, could really be a showcase for us here in Black Hawk County. There are many, many counties that are doing so much more than we are in this area that I would really like to spend some time looking at how we can improve our roadside ditches. And that could be, in many ways, either for aesthetic purposes, or improving water quality. That's such a big issue now in so many areas that if we can do our small part, if there are ways we can do that in, in programs we already do, then I would like to know, be a better contributor in that area. Maybe we can encourage pollinator species in, in work we already do. How can we improve our roadsides? Just by being more knowledgeable is, is much of our issue. We just don't have anyone who is specialized in that type of science or that type of work. I've talked to some with Mike Hendrickson about this, how we could partner in the future if we were, if secondary roads engineer's office, we were to get a position whose sole job was to take care of our roadsides. I see a lot of partnership in, with us in conservation with a partner, or, excuse me, with a position like this, that I, I really want to take some time in the next six months and come back to you with a recommendation or to get your thoughts on evolving a position like this. Next question or slide, thank you. So I think just to wrap up here, now, we've talked about strategic planning and we, the engineer's office, I would like to do some type of public outreach, primarily probably through an internet survey. We want to work with InterCog because they are, have been really good at getting people to find out. InterCog is good at finding people to send surveys to, knowing the methods to get information to people to conduct a survey. We're going to be meeting with them this month to talk about how we can get a survey going to find out what we should be thinking about strategically in the roads department. Does the public want us, do they have recommendations for us? Do they think we should be focusing on areas that we're not? Of course, one of the areas then that I feel we should ask about is what are, what would you like to see in, in the roadside development area? We'll definitely keep you posted in this area and would, we'll have more to be saying in the future about strategic plan and where the direction of the part, of the department, if there's any changes we want to make based on customer or public input. And definitely we'll get your input before we finalize any type of survey. And I think that's the last slide. And I, I know that's a lot of information, but can I answer any questions? And I think James wanted to go back to a few, a few slides.
Kathy, the board's going to be talking about capital of the 14th?
Yes.
Seeing that your list is quite large, could you supply for the 14th when the board goes over your capital list again? Kind of put it in a priority list?
Okay, yes.
Just in case the, the, trim that down a little bit, that way.
Yeah, and I can zoom in on, on the 14th, it's just that.
You're just not here in person.
Not only your department, I think we'll.
Yeah, as long as you can zoom in, I think it'll be important to, you know, that'd be great, thank you.
And Kathy, the $20,000 less in fuel, what do you attribute that to? Fuel cost, weather, what?
So that, I think that was an item that we were pretty sure that the prices seem, gasoline, diesel prices seem pretty stable right now. We didn't, just in our collective knowledge, we didn't really see any reason why they would go sky high. So we felt pretty comfortable, knowing that we can always ask you for an amendment because we did the year before, but it just seemed we're getting into perhaps a cycle of maybe more moderate winters, or at least the start of the winter seems to be more moderate. We could have a bad spring and then easily eat up more of that fuel, but we just felt comfortable reducing it by 20,000.
Price of fuel is supposed to be going up. They announced that just a few weeks ago and it has been going up on a regular basis.
Do you want to go back to anything, James, or?
No, not on your slide, not on your slide. I just, I, I now have up, Tom, the, the operating expense line item list. What makes up that 219,409, as well as the operating revenues as well? So if you wanted to take a look at that, that's, that's what I have on the screen.
And Kathy, how many, are you, how many open positions do you have right now?
As of today, we have one because of the retirement.
So when you have an open position, you're able to fill them quite easily?
Yes, for example, when our equipment operators were in need of one of those, we generally have, it fluctuates with the economy, but we generally get probably at least a dozen applicants. At one point, I think we've had as many as like three dozen applicants. But we do generally find people.
And you said you have a roadside guy on staff now, right?
We have, yes, we have a, a lead worker. That's, the position's called lead worker. But his, he is not full-time. He is in a snowplow. He's, in the winter months, he's primarily doing the same thing all of our equipment operators do in their, in their shop.
What would a roadside manager do in the winter?
So there is, I can't give you all those answers right now, but. No, that person would be, for example, they would probably sit in the office here. So they would, they would work on plans for improving locations. They would work on grant applications. They would work on getting a database of our, an inventory, I should say, of our, example, our noxious weeds or our prairie grass or that type of thing. And I don't know all the answers to that yet. That's why I'm proposing it at this point.
You do have an.
No, go ahead. I was just going to say, when you say proposing, you mean just that's something you want to evaluate, look at and evaluate over the next year for us?
Right, that's why we were leaving that position unbudgeted. Yeah.
Leaving it vacant, but unbudgeted as well. So, so we're not, we're not including it in the budget, but at this point in time, we did want to just leave it vacant to see the, the potential of moving it somewhere else or do, doing something else with it.
When you need an employee with a CDL, you're not having any problem finding candidates that have a CDL?
Generally, no. No, the county has some advantages, for example, for, a lot of our people come from contractors, for example. They like the working hours in the summer and the working hours in the winter. They'd rather be home when it's nice and they don't mind plowing snow in the winter. So we generally don't, we can find CDL drivers.
As long as we're on winter right now, does our contracts allow the snowplow guys to be out at night like the city does? to be out at night, like the city does and all the smaller cities, cleaning, when there's no traffic, when it'd be easier to clean roads?
So, Wayne, did you hear that, Wayne?
Yes.
Do you want to answer that?
Well, when we're out there for 12 hours, you know, it's a really long day. And a lot of times, our mechanic is working a couple of. Current. Stay.
You're breaking up, Wayne.
Might have to ask him.
I can answer that too, Wayne. The, the contract says that the working hours in the winter are from, from 5:00 AM till 5:00 PM. We generally, you know, we want to be there, in a snow event, we want to be there for the morning commute and then the afternoon commute. And generally, we want the guys to go home and go to bed, so that they can be back at, back to the shop at 4:00 AM or 4:30. So we've never really considered having a night crew. Yes, and unfortunately, in today's day and age, people expect us to be like the DOT, and we, that we should be out there, but we can't be without dramatic changes, like hiring part-time people, for example, or.
Changing their hours.
Yeah. But we, you know, we want them to be there for the morning and the evening commute, I guess is our, obviously our priority.
Well, if they were out at night, the road would be clean in the morning, if, you know, depending on the snow.
Perhaps, yeah, right.
You know? And going back to the grader, a grader goes through a drift, a grader can go through an eight-foot drift.
I would rather have Wayne answer that. Did you hear that, Wayne?
Yes, I heard that. An eight-foot drift, it takes several times to back up and hit it to go through a drift of, of that size.
So it'd be smarter to have a plow out there to clean it out, to get it clean, get the main part of it off, right? Maybe?
I mean, the graders, they stay on the gravel, like unless the hard surface are really drifted, and then the graders will have to run in front of our trucks to open up roads for them.
Can you talk about why we don't put snowplows on the gravel roads?
Yeah, I mean, we would just lose way too much rock if we put the trucks on the gravel roads. Plus, we need to have, the trucks need to stay on those hard surface roads and get over those as much as we can, to keep them safe.
So how, how much more gravel you figure we lose with a plow compared to a grader? 10%, 20%?
I would guess 10%.
Yeah.
And the grader, the grader operators know their roads better, and otherwise it.
Yeah.
In the past, we've had trucks, we tried that once, didn't work. We had more trucks stuck, because they didn't know the roads very well, they didn't know where head walls for box culverts were, and they were hustling up trucks and stuff, and it just didn't work.
Kathy, you said the contracts do dictate what time our people can work?
I thought so. Isn't that right, Wayne and Carol, that it fight, the contract says 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM in the winter, winter hours?
I believe that's what our snow policy says, but I'm not sure.
Really? I can't believe a contract tells you what time your employees work, yeah. I'll check whether the man done that.
Yeah, I, I think Wayne's right.
I'll have to agree with Wayne. I, I think it's the snow polit, the county's snow policy and not the contract.
Yeah, I was going to say, I didn't think contract was that language.
I, that's right, yeah.
Kathy, real quick then, on the oper, are we looking at the operating expenses now?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, going down real quick, you got a 400% increase on, on minor equipment, what's that?
Can you talk about that, Carol?
Absolutely. The minor office equipment and the computer equipment increase is where we placed the money for, you know, if we need the desk in an office for a computer, or if we need any other office equipment for a computer in these outshops that don't currently have computers.
So you're basing this on the outshops, is what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then you got 180% increase on the next line item, which is computers?
Correct.
And that is?
More computers.
For computers. The first line item was for office equipment, for desks and chairs and such, and then the second line item is for actual computers.
What computers are we replacing?
This would be for additional machines at outshops.
Okay, so all this is based on supplying the outshops and with, once we get internet, email, you're talking about buying desks, chairs, computers and everything? Is that what you're saying?
If necessary, correct.
Yeah. And then going down the list, I don't really see anything else that's sticking out there, 41% for janitor maintenance. Increase, really don't see anything else. So you added, where, James, where was the decrease at? It shows a decrease in the operating, what, what reflects that decrease?
Mostly the professional services, when Kathy was pointing out that they just don't need that much for the projects that they have. You'll see a, you'll see a negative 22.81%. Line item 0670, 207,940. The other big one was, she had touched base on that as well, the fuel and lubricants, that's a $20,000 increase. You know, those, those, those make up part of it. The right-of-way purchasing, that decreased by 28,000, or 56%. And then, and then the only other larger one was the training and education, 6,325. So altogether, that's, that's kind of where we're, where we're looking at.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, Kathy.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Kathy?
One thing that I do kind of want to ask, or kind of talk about a little bit, maybe would be the warranty. I do kind of want to, you know, kind of bounce some ideas perhaps off the board. We typically don't get service agreements for our stuff, because we're self-funded for that. I don't know, I mean, I, I would love to work with, with Carol and Kathy and see if warranties would be a, a, a better way to go. I don't know if it would be, only because now we're buying warranties for 20-some vehicles rather than being self-funded. If we don't use that, you know, that, that is just going back into the fund balance, whereas, you know, it's, 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 it's like buying an insurance policy, really. And, and I don't know, I don't know if it would be. I do know that, again, we are self-funded for service agreements for computers, or, like printers and, and everything, everything that goes into that. So I guess that would be a conversation that I would, I would love to have with you and kind of work that out as well.
Yeah, we, we would definitely be receptive to that. Other counties throughout the state of Iowa have gone to leasing, motor graders and trucks, for example, so several years ago, when, when several finance, our budget administrators ago, we did take a better, a harder look at leasing versus purchasing, and just felt that the, the purchasing was a better way to go, just due to the costs. Probably at that time, maybe interest rates were higher, the, the leasing costs were higher. But there are different options out there that we can talk about.
Yeah.
My suggestion change was to look at when we buy new trucks, to get a longer warranty, buy a longer warranty, you can do that, not talking about a damn 20-year-old truck, putting a warrant.
Right, right.
Spending money on them.
Right.
Just the newer trucks.
Yeah.
Start now and start progressing from here, not going back and covering.
So, and I can actually, I can speak to.
Pardon me?
To the warrant.
You're cutting out, unfortunately. Can you speak now?
Or you can come down here, Carol.
Yeah, come down, Carol, yeah, because you're breaking up badly.
You're just down the hall from you.
Okay, give me a minute.
Sure, you bet.
Start screaming.
Yeah, I guess my, my only comment to that really would be, you know, I, I wonder because of the, the need and the wear and tear.
Can you hear me better now?
We can hear you at the moment, yeah.
At the moment, yeah.
I guess we can see, you can start, we can see if we can finish.
Go ahead, Carol.
It's probably not.
I just wanted to speak to the extended warranty that we did purchase on our most recent truck purchase. The extended warranty is for six years or 150.
Might as well come down.
$6,000?
Can you come down?
You're breaking up still.
You know, it's, it's something that I think we should experiment with, maybe Kathy, and see how it works. It may work or it may not, but I don't know if we want to go full-blown into it.
Well, especially if the numbers look good. I mean, yeah, try it, but.
Sometimes it, it may pay off, other times it may not.
Right.
Frankly, I'm surprised you can get an extended warranty on a vehicle used, not for commercial purposes like we do.
Yeah, and I mean, I guess the only reason I brought that up was because, you know, when we're self-funded for insurance policies, typically we do save money by being self-funded, because, you know, yeah, we do run that risk, but more often than not, we save money just by paying for the, paying for the repairs out of pocket than we do having an insurance policy. And, and with the, with the amount of wear and tear on those vehicles, I would imagine that those warranties, extended warranties on, on the dump trucks or the, or the larger equipment, they would be very expensive. But I, I, that's why I was just saying, I, I would love to take a look at that with you and, and just try to, you know, put some numbers together.
I had forgotten about the, that we did purchase that extended warranty. I don't remember the cost though, what it cost us though.
Yeah, it's worth looking at, but usually they wouldn't offer it if they couldn't make money off of it.
Yeah, right, and that's, you know.
That's for you to show us.
Yep.
They could end, they could end up losing money too.
Yeah.
That's why they won't do it, probably, yeah.
But over the grand scheme of things, they make a lot of money, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. If I speak clearer here. Okay, so the extended warranty that came with the truck, or repurchased with the truck?
Can you hear her, Tom?
I'm sorry.
Hold the mic down if you need.
Um.
What's it include, and how much is it, is all we need to know?
Uh, it was included in the price, it was in the bid.
Oh.
So it is six years or 150,000 miles. I don't know. Wayne, how quickly we get to that 150,000 miles?
It's probably cut now.
What kind of truck is this?
This was a Freightliner.
Dump truck.
There's five-year, 100,000 miles on cooling, and transmission is five years, unlimited miles.
So it's targeting certain areas of the vehicle.
Yeah, like our cars do.
Yeah.
Everything covered, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
I guess we're ready for the next one.
Any further, all right. Last but not.
Who do we have next?
IT.
IT.
Can we have a short recess, Chair?
Absolutely.
Just a few minutes.
You want to pull?
You two arranged?
About two minutes. That works.
That's all it's going to take.
Kim, do you want to go through your presentation first, or do you want me to give a brief?
You're welcome.
I worked a million years, go at Best Buy, the appliance section.
Yeah.
Only warranty that made sense for me was the vacuum wipe.
I tell you what, Brian, you're just always in the right place at the right time.
Everything else was, your stove wasn't going to go out in a year unless it was.
I even did that when you were with the car, and it was just worthless. It was like, again, I'd never open it again. Because they talked about all the technology and the different things, and it was like, no, it was a waste of money, and I think that's what most people find out, but willing to try it. But, and then when you go to apply for something, I also have a grandson, and when you wanted to get the, use the warranty, that's not included.
Yep.
No, this is what's included, and not that stuff, so it's like, I can't imagine it'd be great, but.
I believe it, but I know.
It gives them something to do when they're spare time, they can look into that, I guess. Well, a lot of stuff, I mean, a lot of stuff it takes to do those roads, though.
Yes, it does.
Otherwise, we can't have a light show for them. Kathy, find something to do on the roads or the ditches, I like the roadside.
Yeah, no, it's.
Improving them.
And there are, you know, she's, there's lots of different grants out there.
Yeah, for that.
As well, and I'm hopeful with the new direction, February, there'll be more of those kind of grants.
Oh, yeah.
Over the next couple of, four years at least, but.
Get into the next four years. In the meantime, what a nightmare.
Yeah, I know, it's.
Sad, it almost made me sick yesterday.
Yeah, me too.
It wasn't, like I said, it shouldn't have been unexpected, I mean, almost, but it was just like, really. Obviously, we need some more money in IT. These stupid connections, I don't know what we can do about that. I told Kim, I said during our meeting, yeah, Tuesday, it did the, the weak signal thing again, and I had a meeting that followed at 11 o'clock, and it cut out all the time. Anything we can do to fix that, that'd be good. I haven't watched, do you watch Waterloose? Cedar Falls, I never noticed that.
I don't, I know, I don't watch very often.
I was just wondering if they ever have that issue. I know Cedar Falls doesn't usually.
Yeah, I know they had even one whole meeting get canceled because of connection issues.
Oh, I, yeah, I'm sure, I can say everybody does. The BA meeting yesterday, it was really good, so.
But they're, they're looking into getting their own connection, and starting with their buildings first.
Oh, really?
Because Quinn called me about it, he's like, who do you have for internet? Like, oh, we have CFU, we have Mediacom as the backup. He was seeing if we'd be interested, and I'm like, well, maybe as the backup, if you get it. Get more details, yeah, that's why, I haven't heard anything else on it.
Let's do watch. Yeah, we have partnerships, yeah.
I'd love to see an independent, have the city have a provider here.
Yeah.
Your brother was terrible.
I know, that conversation's coming up. Set me back about two hours apiece, and they're, they're watching.
Weekly. Jerry's last brother died the other day, so they're all going.
You know, I think they're.
That generation.
His numbers aren't looking good.
So he's going to see the doctor.
I see a letter, looks like it's probably on the agenda, on Tuesday.
Right.
Oh, if you go to.
Don't announce so much attention, but at least our.
See.
Well, yeah, I guess. They, they, I mean, it's a select few, but yeah, they.
Tom, are you back?
Yeah. I thought you said, yeah, but it was Mike's.
A $20 watch. Making the gesture, I'm not sure it gets your attention too much. You know, I, I get more compliments on my $10 watch than I do on my.
Give him another minute.
$100 watch. He said two or three, give or take.
He's taken five.
He might be there, just not as visible.
Well, the one thing I did want to say about the light show is, Grant and I went to it, and the gentleman ahead of us paid for us, and we paid for the people behind, so there's a sense of community there.
That was neat, yeah.
Really nice.
That actually, that was the exact same thing that happened to us, too.
Well, were you further down the line from us?
Yeah, maybe you paid for. Hey, I might have been in front of you.
There you go.
Was it your idea to start it? No. Then, no, then you might have. No, but I continued it on, and that's what matters.
You might have been behind, or maybe you got heard generously, that's deep.
I just thought that was a really nice.
That is, yeah. But I know a lot of people have commented on, I think they thought it was a reasonable, very, you know, able to go the carload for $10, didn't, thought it was pretty good, because it was like, yeah.
I think that's beyond reasonable.
Yeah. It was nice.
Well, somewhere around 25 bucks or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least fifty inside.
Guess we probably.
I think so.
Now Grant's gone.
We're on hold, oh, now Tom's back.
We're just waiting for Grant now, Tom.
Hey, thank you. Had to wash the car.
Get it cleaned?
Yeah.
Get the underside?
Yeah, to get the underside, that's what I was.
Get the underside.
Got an Aussie? I hear it's a pretty rusty chassis.
Kathy, I was gonna ask, if your, um, PowerPoint presentation that you made available to us, if you could blow that up just a little bigger, I'd like a copy of it.
Sure.
Another copy. Oh, yeah, two or three, but I just thought that one, you had a lot of information on there, a lot of good information, but it was so small, it was difficult to read, so I thank you. I know you're trying to conserve paper, but, and nobody else may want it, but I appreciate it, thanks. Or send it to me electronically, yeah, it's fine, too.
I did send it to you all electronically.
Did you? Okay, then I haven't opened that, so that's great, then, I'll blow it up myself, thank you. Kathy has pictures, and what if she don't have any pictures in here?
I know, you know.
No old computers with bungee cords around them or anything like?
No bungee cords, cord, no, but yeah, some of them are a little old.
Alright, we are resuming our meeting, Kim?
Okey-dokey, so, um, so this is the time of year I kind of go over what we've done so far this year and, um, talk about what we want to do next year. And so it's kind of, um, a little early in the game, cause we have a lot of year left to go. But I, there's a lot of words here, so I'm just gonna go over a few of the things that I think, and you guys each got this in the email, as well, yesterday. So we did get the administrator hired, and he's been on board for about fif- five months, and he's working out really well, I'm very happy. We got the specialist hired, and his start date is January twenty-fifth, so we're looking forward to having him on board. And we will go ahead then and get the last position posted, so that we can get that going as well. I had a slide in here previously about ACES, but we pretty much talked about that Tuesday. So we have, um, reduced that fee, and that's part of my operating budget that we can talk about. The implementation of the tax administration system really took a lot of work to get them through that first year. And unfortunately, because of COVID, we never had a tax sale, we never published, that kinda thing, so we'll have that yet this summer. With the new domain name, I think that went over really easily, better than I expected, and I think blackhawkcounty.ivo.com is gonna be more, consistent with how other counties are doing it, so I think that's a good move. We've upgraded the servers to supported versions, um, I think most of the desktops are done, and I think we've done a couple, well, four, that Kathy may not be aware of, but the machines are old enough that they really ought to be replaced anyway, because when they're older and you upgrade them to Windows 10, they aren't as efficient as they would have been, so.
So you're saying with that upgrade of those, then we'll be ninety-nine percent completed with having it for Windows?
I think we're at ninety-nine right now.
Right now, okay.
Yeah, we did four of them out at the shop, so those are, but I'm not saying they don't need to be, be replaced, because they were old and they lead a hard life out there with the dust and grime, it's just.
Kim, are you working with the engineer's office on their implementation of their, uh, computers for their shops?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna start having meetings, and Kim will be on our invite list. Okay, thank you, okay, um.
What'd you say?
Well, he, she didn't hear, so.
Yeah, they are gonna invite me to those meetings.
Okay, so she's gonna work with you, how many computers are we actually gonna buy, are they gonna work with you on getting them?
Yeah, the desktops like that, they generally do, it's just the CAD ones that they take care of themselves individually. And I, from the numbers that they're talking about, it's not like every person's gonna get a, a computer.
Sure.
They'll have a few at each location, is the way I would.
What about internet service to those areas, are we gonna be able to do that?
Yeah, uh, we'll be working with, I'll be working with them, and in the past, actually, um, and it's been quite a while ago, and I forget what the gentleman's name was, we spent some time looking at the locations and seeing where fiber was, as, and it was not gonna work out, but things have changed a lot since then, so I imagine that that shouldn't be a terrible problem.
Okay, okay.
With the election, um, the Secretary of, Secretary of State had some very specific guidelines of what he wanted done, and we were able to fulfill all of those and the timeframe's necessary, so I feel real good about that. And, um, this is an ongoing thing, so we'll have to, you know, make sure we get those new deadlines, because there's things that were out for twenty twenty-one. Um, and as part of that, um, we signed up for, on the cyber security, infrastructure security. Yes, I, I may not have that right, actually. Anyway, um, we have an agreement with them for them to monitor our network and do some testing for us for that. And the good old treasures document imaging data. This is a very sad story, they have millions of records that need to be brought over. And if I'm really lucky, by Easter, I'll have it done, and it's running twenty-four hours a day. And that's to get through, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, oh, so, um, we're working with Rory, but he disappeared, we have the badging in place at Pinecrest and the state employees. That was quite a bit of work to get that going, and it kinda got delayed because of COVID, but I think all but county social services, and I just got their pictures yesterday, have badges. We upgraded our, our GIS to ten point eight, and the Assessor Farms program, that's what they use to, uh, calculate egg land. We did the upgrade for New World Financial payroll and software, so we're current on that. We continue to address issues that are identified by our scanning appliance that we get from the state. So that's one of our free things that, they, well, it's not free, but it's Homeland Security Grant pays for that. We have, uh, security information event management service that when there's issues with people logging on or excessive downloads or that kinda thing, I get an alert and we address those. And then working on maintaining the hardware and software. Okay, so here's some things that we wanna get done yet, this next six weeks, six months. Hire that network technician with support. We have installed the Tyler New World Total Content Management, that's a document imaging system. It's installed, but, and it is, hasn't been implemented. I have a meeting tomorrow with Tyler to talk about, Tyler New World to talk about it. Civic Plus, our website, with the way our contract reads, after so many years, we can have that look refreshed, so, we'll try and get that done yet this year, this fiscal year. Working on, um, getting a different GIS mapping cert website, and I've got quotes for that, so I'll be bringing that to the board in the near future. Every so often, we need to review our HIPAA policy per, um, for our, our requirements. And working on our disaster recovery plan, um, we made a lot of, we did a lot of work on it this year, but there's always gonna be things that need to be done with that. And Zoom, um, we had several issues today, and for some reason, this cable is not working, so that might have been part of it. And then, um, one thing that I need to either meet with the IT depart, or EIT committee or decide what we really wanna do about Office 365. If we aren't gonna do that, then we need to start buying licenses to make work current for off, office products. Okay, and I think I've addressed most of this, um, about security, but I want us to keep in mind that, um, we really need to be vigilant on this, um, you know. Tyler New World had a breach, FireEye had a breach, SolarWinds had a breach, you know, here are these big companies that are having security issues, and, um, we each need to do our part, and so if there's some things that we can do, I'm gonna, you know, use all the, um, things that we can get from the state, um, the CISA and that kinda thing, but I just wanna make sure, we're working hard on this, okay?
Do we use any of the programs that are part of this big federal breach?
If it's with the multi-state, I'm a member, we are a member of that, and then we're also a member of the election infrastructure branch of that. And then we had that agreement with the cyber security infrastructure services. It might be, agency might be what it is, okay? Okay, so for twenty twenty-two, um, we, you know, those top two things are always gonna be things that were recommendations from the assessment, working on our cybersecurity, um, making sure that everyone takes the cybersecurity training. We had a couple ladies yesterday that clicked on something they shouldn't, and we had to get their machines and run scans on them, and yes, they both, at least one of them, I should say, said, I knew from the training that I shouldn't have done it, but I wasn't thinking. And so at least she recognized it, she confessed, that's the word, brought in her machine and we took care of it, so the training is very important, so we need to make sure we do that. The expanded use of the document management software, and we get that in New World, and then we also with the DocuWare, when we get, um, treasures over, we'll be able to add more departments to that version, too. We've got some hardware and software on my capital, um, if we're gonna do Office 365, I'd like to get started on that. And we do have a SharePoint license already, and so we could get going on that, and then the website, okay?
Yeah, my first memory on the implementing Office of 365, what that does for us, or why we're looking into.
Yeah, so when you do Office 365, it's more of a service, we really don't own the heart software. So there's a set fee for, and the last quote I got was a hundred and eighty-five dollars per person per year, okay? If we didn't use Office 365, and there's more than just the software, so that's kinda why we need to talk about it. If we needed to buy a, a license which would be ours, we could use it for as long as we wanted to, runs like three hundred and twenty dollars, three hundred and fourteen twenties the last time I bought it, that fluctuates a little bit for the professional version, and not everybody uses that, and the standard version runs like two hundred and seventy-four dollars, so.
Thank you.
Okay, and so, um, one of the things that's in our hardware is a ticket application that we, we were trying to work together to that, so that we could use that in tandem, and, um, the last few things are things that aren't gonna cost money, but, um, working on it, well, I guess this could, improving county disaster recovery, because some of the equipment that we're replacing is gonna go out to our, um, disaster recovery site, so that, um, will be easy, it'll be easier for us to transfer there if we did have an issue where the courthouse wasn't available. And, um, we started this already, going through some of the documentations with the three of us together, and we'll get a little harder on that when we have everybody on board. And then I wanna review the IT policies, um, one of the things that, um, the audit had was that we should have a change management policy, so working on that, so that we can get that into the, into the board policy, and then meeting with departments quarterly.
The work ticket system application, that's something that will, it'll be through your department, but it'll work for both you and maintenance then?
Yes, right, yeah, we're looking at something that we can use together.
I know Rory's been talking about that for quite a while, so, you as well.
Right.
That'd be great.
Cause I think we both have quite similar needs, is there's some things that, um, are ticket things that we should just be doing, you know, like, um, double-checking the builds on Office, you know, some of those things need to happen, I mean, are supposed to happen anyway with how we do patching, but I'm having a hard time of thinking of something, but, um, maybe running CC cleaner on machines or refreshing them, that kinda thing, so, and I know he wants something that he can say, oh, the filters need changed in the air conditioning in June.
Whereas we'd be using it for like the help desk.
Right, it would generate tickets so that we, and I, I've talked to James Naring from Marshall County about this quite a bit. He's got quite the software that he likes to use, so we just, Rory and I just need to work together on that, and find one we like.
Thank you.
Well, I'll cut, I'll cut in here quick, uh, just going over the summary. You're looking at, uh, an increase of ten thousand dollars in revenue, uh, that's nineteen point eight percent. The salary and benefits are gonna be increasing seven thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars. Most of that is just the salary and wages for the, for the placeholder of three percent. There was a zero increase in operating budget, um, in the operating capital, uh, that is a decrease of fifty-eight thousand four eighty-one. The Capital 360 Fund, which is the IT fund, uh, that is an increase of a hundred and twenty-four thousand eight twenty-eight. We did not budget anything for the IT Capital 360 in this fiscal year, and that's why it's, you know, essentially a hundred percent increase, so. Uh, all in all, you're looking at a sixty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-dollar increase or five point three eight percent. Now, the one thing that, uh, that I had instructed Kim on is just including everything that we possibly can into these numbers, so there's absolutely nothing, uh, nothing that would increase this number. Now, for example, and she had brought this up, is if we did do Office 365, then we do not need to budget for the, uh, the Microsoft Office upgrades, and I don't, I mean, I, I can pull those numbers up, but that would be a direct, uh, decrease in the, in the budget. If we didn't do Office 365, and we did do the, uh, the Microsoft updates, then we can pull Mi- Microsoft 365 out of that budget, but as of right now, those are both in there, and that's just one example of, of really, this is, um, this, this is an inflated number, and, and worst-case scenario, um, that's, that's really what we're looking at. The other thing that I did wanna run by Kim, or that I did run by Kim, is we do have IT fund balance that we can use.